For committee in the whole, for Tuesday, July 28th. Let the record show that all committee members are present. Item one on our agenda tonight is finance and bills. If you would receive a copy, this month's finance and bills. Anybody have any comments, questions, or? Okay, so do you know, does someone like to sponsor?
I'll sponsor Paul.
By Alderman Crawford, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Doherty, all in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, finance bills is passed, it is approved, and will be referred to tonight's regular meeting. Item two is a continuing discussion on the university equity included task force. Now, Mayor has asked, he did send out an email and to the council, and he did want to talk about an idea he had for this. Part of our discussion, Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Paul. Uh, I know my glasses are foggy, so I guess I've been pulling a lot of hot air sometimes, I guess. Anyways, uh, in continuing on with this effort to get a committee or a couple of committees together, gave us a couple of ideas that I have. I think this, I think the, uh, the police review committee should be separate from the, uh, from the other committee. Okay, and the reason for that is that this committee is going to have to, uh, we're going to have to, people that are, that are put on this committee are going to have to have some idea on, number one, how police work, policies and procedures, able to look at things with a neutral eye. So, I'm recommending that we put together a small committee that would look at, uh, laying out, I guess you could say, the ground rules for this. You know, we looked at Chief Rowley, I saw, we've been looking at other cities that have the review boards, and some of them have, some of them have to go through the police surveying, uh, the, uh, or a cabinet, they have to have a surveying police cabinet. They have to look at that so that they have an idea of how, how it works. So, we want to lay some ground rules like that. My suggestion would be is we have at least, we got myself, Chief Rowley, and at least two of them on this committee, on this, uh, the criteria for how people are going to be appointed to it, and we have people from the community also.
So, that would be the small, so just to put into perspective for those of you that haven't seen the email, uh, the police commit, review committee would be made up of community members who will serve to review policies pertaining to public safety concerns in the city, also serve to review complaints of misconduct and use of power rule. We will develop criteria to be appointed for this committee, and what you're talking about would be you, Chief Rowley, aldermen, and, uh,
Members of the community.
The members of the community, but, but also the, to accomplish this, we would have to establish a steering committee that would, that would help us establish committees, basically?
Yeah, that would help establish the, uh,
The committee to establish a committee.
Basically the criteria on, on becoming a member.
Okay.
Items like, okay, do you want, do they have to have some sort of background or knowledge of police work? Uh, should there be a background check on these individuals? Uh, should there be, uh, drug testing? Uh, things like that. So, this committee would lay all that out and decide, and we would have some guidance from many, many documents that are out there on us. And then this committee would decide how, what the criteria are going to be, and then we would move forward with appointing that committee. That's just a thought I have, it's open for discussion.
I think that's pretty standard practice, actually, the way, I don't know.
So, we're talking about a committee to form a committee?
Basically, yeah.
Do we need a committee?
But that's how a lot of professional organizations do form things.
So, first of all, I wasn't mocking it, but thank you, Paul. Um, I'm asking if that's what we're talking about, is forming a committee to, to establish the guidelines of what a, a sitting, this would, this would be a permanent? Is that right? Is that, is that your understanding, is that this is a, the, uh, police reform committee is a, it's not just like they come in, they do a job, and it's over with? It is an ongoing?
This would be an ongoing, yeah. They will serve a term. That's some of the things that the steering committee can, uh, can decide.
Okay.
It's going to be a term, how long a term will be.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what's the, what is the criteria to be a member?
Thanks. Um, I think, you know, I think we're, we're really spending a lot of time on this, for a committee to be appointed committee. But I, I'm concerned about the community members, because this whole process was to, um, address an issue that we have, that folks have been showing up to town halls for, giving their suggestions, and giving their, um, you know, just their opinions. And I think we're kind of getting away from that. It's almost sounding like a professional committee, um, and I, I don't think that would be intense. And I think when you read through, like, the governor's outline, um, to me, the stakeholders in the community are the people. And we could talk about the faith base, we could talk about business base, but I think it goes back to the people. So, I hope we don't get away from what we started with this whole conversation. I, I just feel like we're kind of getting in a different learning map, and, um, I, I just don't want to lose the whole, like, of what we were trying to do.
I think that's a fair point, yeah. I, I definitely agree. Uh, again, my, my biggest concern with this, uh, with this situation is I, I don't want this to be lip service. I want this to be effective, and my experience has been that when you hastily throw together something, and just try to throw something against the wall to see what sticks, that's, you just end up with a big mess, right? It ends up with people moving in different directions, and I would just urge the city to move cautiously when we do this, because I want to do this right from the beginning, and not have it be, like I said, just thrown together.
So, like ninety percent of the governor's mandates just kind of tossed off?
Yeah. I mean, I don't want to get off into the weeds with that, but look at the, the policies on, a lot of the COVID-related policies. We're just making this up as we go along, and, and sometimes they work, and sometimes they don't, but, I don't know.
I just, I, I hope we don't go down a rabbit hole where we create another committee to pick the members of the second committee to pick the first committee, and just...
Well, yeah, that would be ridiculous.
I, I think we are the committee. We are that organization that forms the police reform committee. We are, we, we are the ones, we are the law-making body that, that has been entrusted by the members of the residents of Olian, to work with the mayor, right, to, to form that committee. We can, we have the, the power to bring in, uh, expert witnesses to, to advise who should be on that police reform committee. You know, other, other municipalities are doing this, and they, it doesn't seem like it's taking them, um, I don't know, such lengths. And I appreciate the fact that you, you don't want to just throw something ad hoc together, but, but we're the, we're that body. And why can't we reach out to members of police enforcement, uh, and, as well as community members, and say, okay, this is what it needs to look like?
I also, to follow up with what John's saying, is, um, we also have to have some police officers on it, too. You know, we talked about that before. I mean, there's a central, um, spoke of the wheel, and, you know, they have to be there, and they have to share their ideas with us, and, because without them, we're just kind of swimming upstream.
But for purposes of ethical issues, I don't know if you'd pick, like, maybe a current police officer, maybe more of a retired police officer, or somebody that's higher up the ranks, that's not on the streets every day, that, you know what I mean? You wouldn't want, you wouldn't want a cop that's walking the beat every day, who might also be somebody who is the topic of something that's brought to the police reform committee, for example. You'd probably want maybe like a, a, you know, a, I'm not really a hundred percent sure of our structure, there's sergeants and captains, and, you know, maybe you get a captain out there who's not always walking the beat every day. Somebody who sees the guys, talks to the guys, but still has oversight on that, who might be less of a talking point. But, I mean, I, this whole topic is digressing, because how we pick the people and the members on the committee is a different topic. The first topic is talking about the rules and structure of said committee, so, wagging before the horse.
If this committee is going to make policy changes in the police department, don't you think a member of the, you should, you should also be involved? I mean, if you're going to agree on this, I'll be asked if they try to do something that's, upsets the union, you know? So, I think, well, maybe somebody, one of the union reps should be on that, maybe also.
Which, which, I mean, that's a valid point, right? Which is why this is, why is not this the group to work alongside the mayor, to come up what the police reform committee needs to look like? I don't, I guess I disagree that we need a special committee to form another committee. That's a valid, that's a very valid point.
And I think if we, we just make it more policy, and, you know, keep it simple, and just put a committee together, and if we find we need somebody else, or the people we, we have on the committee who still have a knowledge, we're going to reach out to the people that do. But I think we can get them to, it's been, what, over a month since we started talking about this? And we're still deciding what committee is going to form, what committee. I, I just think we need to keep it simple and get the right people on, and by example, I think we don't want to do it cap-hazardly. What we got to do is?
Okay, so committee members, we would have to be the mayor, the chief of police, a retired police officer, a union rep, and then a certain number of community members. Okay? So, um, what do we think about community members?
I think some of the community members that actually showed up and showed interest.
Okay.
You know, there's a long list of those folks to talk about. Maybe some of them don't want to put themselves out there, and maybe some do.
And the same way that people reach out to the mayor for vacancies in the aldermanship of different wards. They reach out to the mayor, and the mayor takes that as actual, somebody who's forthcoming and has interest in said position, and then we, you, you vet them from there. If you get a hundred people, you can't have a hundred people, so. And I do like Bill's idea, though, of having everybody that sits on this committee kind of cross-trained in a public police academy. I think that's a good training. I mean, we train our zoning board for different zoning laws and things like that, year in and year out. I, I think it's a great idea to cross-train them, to, so that they understand, if you're a community member, you know, understand where the police department comes from, and, you know, a little vice versa, give everybody a refresher, so.
And I would add, um, I would make the community number of people at least as big as the rest of the people on that committee, so they don't feel powered by those other groups.
So, right now, I've got mayor, chief of police, retired police officer, union rep, which could be, potentially be one of the same, two aldermen, and that's six, so then we could have six community members for a tall person committee?
Uh, you'd want to make it an odd number, so tiebreakers.
And I would, if possible, to try to keep that under ten would probably be more productive, if, if there's,
But nine.
You know, if the council president, instead of two aldermen, I don't know, something to try to get that number to nine would probably be ideal.
Yeah, we should try to stick it to nine. Uh, what about the idea of the, does the union rep really need to be a member of the committee? I mean, it's a valid idea, but if...
I don't think you're going to go anywhere.
Right?
Without it.
Without it or with it?
Without it.
Okay.
I think it's necessary. I think,
You're going to make proposals from us, Bill.
We don't have a person that's going to go back and say, we're either with this, or we're against it.
They make a recommendation, and it goes against some union bylaw or something like that, and the next thing you know, it gets tossed back to the committee, so.
So, maybe the idea then is the retired officer goes? I don't know. Maybe we go to one alderman? It doesn't have to become president, even, or it could be?
Right. It could be the chair of the public safety committee. I mean, I don't, you know, um,
And that changes every year. You know, it's not like I'm chair, myself being the chair this year, next year could be somebody else.
Yeah, I think that could happen, I mean,
It's also hard.
The point would be for that person to be the one that brings, brings the results of that committee to us, right?
That person would be there with eight times the council, I think.
Because if you imagine you have six, then the, to make it an odd number, you bring it up to, you know, seven community members. It's hard to have a quorum at thirteen people. We, we, you know what I mean? We've struggled sometimes during summer months, people on vacation, or winter months, when some people are sick and things like that, trying to pull quorum amongst seven of us, so.
I mean, I think even if you have five officials and four residents, I don't know, you're doing the numbers over there. I mean, I don't know if it has to be exactly the same, but I think Jason has a valid point. You don't want to have one or two residents on that.
And then seven.
Right.
City board.
Right.
So, let's do, let's do that, then. Let's do the mayor, chief of police, a retired or current, I was adding there, current police officer, a, a union rep, which could, actually, that could be a current officer. Aren't union reps?
Yes.
Like any union, right? But the, the union rep is also a, a, a...
Well, if we're talking, uh, public safety, we have, uh, we have three unions to take care of public safety. Police demand, police, uh, police, uh, patrol, and we have fire.
So, it would be one of the police, three police?
So, like, police patrols, sounds like it would be, I don't know.
A community police interest.
Would that be your recommendation, Bill? To have, I mean, as far as this com-
Well, you know, I'm sitting here listening, and I think we're getting way out of track on the vision here. Uh, we're talking, this committee is going to be to satisfy the governor's mandates.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And, uh, if we have a, it turns out to be a police review committee, I don't believe we want, uh, we don't want police chief on there. We don't want, uh, myself on there. Uh, we want members of the community that can take, uh, take a look at misconducts, okay? Take a look at, uh, the policies, and, uh, you know, are we, you know, with these policies? And then make recommendations for this. So, the second part of my email is that what I think, that I think, uh, and I'm correct, if I'm wrong, is what this council has wanted to form right from the start with the, with the resolution that was put in, and that is, oh, would you read the second part of the?
Yep, so it's a equity inclusion committee. A committee would be made up of community members covering, uh, covering many of the stakeholders in the city.
So, that would be the committee that would be chaired by, uh, the council, and, uh, they would make recommendations for policies and, uh, things that would cover the entire city family, all the working guys here. So, that's, that's my vision, to have two separate boards, because if they could have one board, uh, there could be a lot of conflicts there. And it would be easier for the small group to, I don't know, to train, and to set the different policies. My thought about a steering committee was to set the criteria on how you would become a part of the police review board. And, uh, but, we can take ideas from other police review boards, there's a lot of them across the state, and, uh, we can consult with that.
Your, what your, you probably are more in tune to what's going on with these police review boards, um, probably than us. Uh, they, they do not usually include the police chief in the, in the review board?
They would include a member. Uh, I, I guess it could be the police chief, but you want to have, uh, you want to make sure that this board is, uh, needs somebody on the police department, and then maybe a sheriff or a chief to guide, guide them with the laws and things like that.
So, because the governor's order was to review, like, in addition to any discrepancies or issues amongst the police department, was also to review policies, is that correct? If I, so, uh, maybe picking a member of the community that's also a lawyer to sit on the board? I mean, some of these policies have a lot of legalese that you can, I mean, you can train a lot of community members till they're blue in the face. They, you know, they might not get all the union laws, or get all the different, uh, the reason for this, the reason for that. Um, I, I barely get a grasp on it, and, I mean...
You know, and, uh, it would be pertinent to have somebody, either one of the union officials, maybe a union rep, on this committee, too, because there's a lot of, you know, you've got contract to deal with, it's not as easy as...
On the police review committee?
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a union, there's union reps, right? Like, there's three different ones for police, and then there's fire, but is there a union, is there a president of the, the union?
Well, kind of, the, the two police department unions is, they're governed by council rating two, and there's a union rep that's governed by council rating two.
Okay, that's like the, the overall, like, all of these unions that have, but who, the local, at the local level, it's just?
There's a president of, uh, of both the command unit, and there's a president of the patrol.
And then is there like a, I don't know, my experience is there's a, there's a, the union stewards, and there's, but union vice president, secretary on that roster, right?
Right. But the one person that would be, uh, the representative of both, that would be council rating two representative. Then you have the fire department, they would, uh, you know, I'm not sure if they, if they should have a role here or not. Like, if we found that this, uh, police review board, that we want the fire department, I don't know. You know, I, I don't know. That's, uh, the question we need to, we need to answer.
So, there's, I mean, when I'm here, it sounds like we need someone who understands, and is involved with the unions enough to be on the board. Essentially, what you've got is a management and a patrol unit, right? You've got all, this goes back to all, that's why it's an issue, why it's separate.
I think you're onto something there, too, with the, with the, you know, so, if, if there was a union rep and a company, like, I'd say company rep, but a city rep, right? Like, uh, on both sides of that farming table, one representative for each of those on the police reform committee.
Or just one that understands how things discuss in that committee affects all. I don't know if that person exists.
Yeah.
But if they do, we could run it up to one person.
They could choose a person.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm saying a person, like, a body, and they, yeah.
And, I mean, essentially, if we create, if we create a committee that involves anybody that's outside of the council, so if there's a public, you know what I mean? If there's a resident of the, of the community that's on this committee, the mayor gets to appoint them regardless. So, I mean, we could have a steering committee, like Bill was saying, but at the same time, he inevitably is the one who gets to pick who's on the, who's on that committee regardless. So, I mean, I mean, based on your email, Bill, you seem to have a good kind of forthright decision on who's going to do it, plus the charter gives you that right as well, so I would say we put together the parameters of the committee, and then...
That's fine. Just, you know, the alderman might be the, uh, the group to assess the, uh, parameters, and, uh, basically, uh, the, uh, how we, uh, people are going to be appointed, that, that's great, that's all I'm looking for, so.
So, let's, let's start, let's set up a framework right now with just rough, general ideas of who, who, like, positions, you know, if it's community members, this, you know, six community members, or, uh, three community members, this person, that person, that person. But like, for, for a police review committee and for an equity inclusion committee, right? So, uh, I, I have seven spots for seven aldermen, seven council members. That's an odd number, it's not too huge, it's not too small, and...
It's worked all right.
Yeah. So, uh, for the police review committee, I, one of the things that I think here is some kind of union, police union representation, right? So, that's, we'll call that it right now. Uh, I heard public safety committee chair?
Or city representation, yeah.
Or city council representation, how about that? What else we got?
I would, I think you'd want to pick a, like, like I said, some kind of legalese, some, somebody who can kind of get in the weeds. Because unless your city council representation is the city attorney, um, you know what I mean? I think you'd want to probably pick a local attorney, or, I mean, you'd have to find one to do pro, pro bono, because this could get astronomical if you tried to bring one in paid.
Why couldn't you ask the city attorney to provide advice on this? Is that not?
That makes sense. Right, right.
Okay? That's three of my advice, but that shouldn't be a...
No, right.
So, that's three, so the police union representative, and city council representative, uh, local attorney appointed or, or advised, not appointed, I should say, uh, by, uh, you know, to the committee?
So, it's two members? Two members, then, out of seven, so we need five more.
No, there's three.
Well, no, city attorney advised.
Why do you need a?
We said we would just use the city attorney to be the, the advisor to the committee.
Not a member?
Not an actual member.
Oh, okay. All right, I see.
Would the mayor not sit on this committee? Wouldn't?
Have you ever tried?
Retired police officer until next, you know, to whoever, you know, if, if it's you again, or the next mayor.
You're talking about the, the police reform committee?
The police reform committee is around right now.
Is retired police officer one of those three? I'm getting a little...
So, I need the, the, Adam Justice White, or, um, police reform committee, police review committee is the police union representative, a city council representative, the mayor.
Like, three community members.
That puts us at six.
Okay. And then guides from our city attorney, so that's still one seat, okay? Maybe three members of the council, huh?
Sure.
And the way the ones that accept power, they should.
Okay. So, we've got police union representative, city council representative, city council representative, mayor, and three community members.
None of those committee, uh, community members, I would assume it would be similar to, I think Kevin was talking about, an interview, right? Submitting resumes, saying that they would be willing to serve on such a committee, go through bill, bill would interview, and we would ratify, or we would, uh, he would appoint, and we would confirm? Is that correct? Is that how most appointments work, Bill?
Yeah. I'm finding that, I think that's, I think that's the smart way to go about it, yeah.
Do you mind if I ask the city attorney something, Paul?
Of course.
Nick, does that, I mean, your understanding of what is the obligation to put together a police reform committee is what we're outlining? Are we on the right track?
I believe you are, uh, but, again, it's still, the way the governor could change things as we, as we raise the bar. Um, but I think we're all in this period of, of exactly the same.
Okay, thank you.
We can always change a committee as it goes, just kind of like, uh, like legislation. Gets thrown out there, and twenty years later, you adjust it.
And that's, that's exactly a, a good point, Kevin. Like, I, I, what I want to do is, all of us together kind of have, you know, let's get something on paper, right? So, um, this is a start, and I don't think we have to be married to police union rep, you know, all this, this exact structure. We can decide that maybe Jeff Rowley has a place on this committee, um, and, you know, I don't know.
I mean, ultimately, I can see it evolving around who wants to be on the committee, right? I mean, um, people who are on the committee should desire to sort of live, continue to grow, otherwise people won't show up. They won't be taken seriously, so, if you have, uh, if you have a lot of input, then maybe it grows bigger, maybe goes to that.
I think it's, um, all these folks have to be going to have a time commitment, you know, whether it's during the day or in the evening. That's one of the first questions I'd ask, is, are you thinking?
Yeah.
Because you don't want people to get out of the committee and not show up after.
Yeah, yeah, because they have a big job.
So, we've kind of got the rough framework for how the skeleton goes together. Now, you've, now, it's, okay, what organs go in the body? What kind of meat and potatoes are you putting in there? Like, where's the, what, what is this committee doing? Is it exactly what the governor mandated, or is it, you know what I mean, like, that's?
Well, it's a Nick's, uh, circle point, that, that's kind of a requirement anyway, right? I think that can change.
Sure, but do you make it to replicate that exactly? Is there additional things that you'd like to add, or, you know what I mean? Or things, tweak to satisfy those, to, to fit our community? I mean, what's?
Yeah, I think that's a valid point. I'm not sure, I'm not sure what the answer to that is.
I, I would, I would, um, I guess I would be open to some, some feedback from the community on, on just that rough outline, you know? Maybe, maybe this truly needs to be a community-driven thing. Maybe there should be five community members instead of three, right?
Yeah.
Maybe the community member should outweigh the city officials in city representation on that. Um, at the end of the day, I think that's, whether you, whether you like it or not, the governor has, you know, uh, connected next year's fundings to, to, to pushing this forward. So, we, we have to give it the best try, and... So, we, we have to give it the best try, and, um, I guess I would be interested to hear some feedback from the community.
Well, yeah, that, that's a good point, and maybe, maybe it's something like the union rap, chief of police, and alderman, and then five community members. Because it really is...
Good.
And, you know, Paul, I think, um, the mayor could be said at, at large, not where we count.
Or, or advisor.
Right.
Ex officio.
Yeah.
Read us at the door. Give our temperature.
So, do we want to talk about the, uh, the equity inclusion committee? Kind of do a rough outline on this one?
Sure.
So I know we did a lot of talking last week about, um, finding someone who could be like, uh, an equity inclusion specialist or officer, and I think we got into a topic about an HR position. And, um, I think that's a, a good idea, but not really what we're trying to accomplish here, right? Like, that's, that's big picture, like, yeah, we should, as a city, we should have an HR person, and, and, yeah, we can find somebody, but that doesn't help us, you know what I mean? No. So I think, um, an equity inclusion committee needs to be chaired by a person with equity inclusion experience and, and expertise.
So what is this committee doing? It's not reforming police laws, I just kind of want to know, because this isn't, I mean, this, this is new territory, right? This is, um, and I, I've never sat in a large corporation where we had, you know, a equity inclusion committee to, you know, or an officer that kind of vet, uh, you know, vamped every employee that walked through the door, like, this is, this is my mission, this is my job, right? The HR director does that, hey, guess what, I hired you, this is my job here, I look at your resume, I make sure that you follow your compliance on sexual harassment, things like that. Hey, this is the CFO, he handles all the finances. What does the equity inclusion committee do if they're not talking about police departments, things like that? Are they saying, hey, my neighbor set a racial incitement at me, they go to this committee as a community member, and they vet it? And they see if there's warrant to do what, right? Like, that's, not really sure what...
So, I mean...
Yeah, oh, go ahead.
Um, I guess, my understanding is, using a diversity and equity, uh, committee now, um, it could be a standing, uh, subcommittee, uh, for the city council, uh, to really look at our internal policies, to ensure that we are, you know, uh, we like to say we're an equal opportunity employer, but are we truly following, uh, is our hiring practices? Are we following the, the letter of the law, you know? Are we doing the best we can to, to pull, uh, from a diverse, um, candidate pool, uh, when we go out to hire? Um, so, I guess, I see a subcommittee as being a recommending body to the city council to change any necessary codes or policies that we have. Um, that's my understanding.
Now, unlike the, the, the finance committee...
That's what I see.
That we have, right?
Audit and compliance.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm inclined to agree, uh, with you on that, like, that, that is, uh, you know, I think that that's the direction we need to go in.
The council...
And we'll obviously give people opportunity to, to kind of, you know, let their opinions be heard on this, but I, I think you're on something there. I think it's about figuring out, you know, who's going to be on the committee, and, and committee members, and, and I think as long as we have a clear mission, and, and, and set, well, just looking at our internal policies, and...
And, and they should, you know, that, that committee should be working with the mayor's office to find risks and opportunities, right? To identify risks like, jeez, you guys don't have an HR specialist. Um, you know, it would be really behoove your organization to, to have an HR specialist. Um, so we don't wind up in a lawsuit or something down the road, because we're not, you know...
Yeah. Agreed.
So that would be, I guess, that was what I was going to come with, is just recommending that that should be a subcommittee to the council, um, to have two council members and three, um, you know, citizens, uh, appointed that have backgrounds in, in, in this area. Um, and take a look at our policies and our, uh, our organization.
So you, you think it should be a five-member committee?
That's, it was five, that's what our subcommittee was. That's my, that's my, five people get more work done, uh, but I know you, you can have seven, you can have nine, it could, you know, it can be any odd number you want. Actually, it doesn't even have to be an odd number, because really, they're, it's not a law, it, it, it's not a lawmaking body, right? It's not a voting, it's a, we're drafting policies and we're making recommendations to the council and the mayor, uh, who then have the power to...
So what if you have six members and three members want to make a recommendation, and three members think the recommendation is asinine? You then have to vote on it amongst that committee to make the recommendation in the first place?
Sure.
Just turn around.
So, you just send that to the council and the council...
Well, and how many times did the, the, uh, audit and compliance committee think you would need, and then you would have an issue discussed, and, and they would kind of come and present to the council?
Right.
And, and maybe, and I think that's, uh, you know, where you could go, and, uh, the way you could approach it.
Mm-hmm.
So just so I'm clear, so we have one, one is going to be a police reform committee, the, which is looking at discre, uh, incidents with the police department, as well as the police department's policies. The other one is going to be city policies as a whole, to make sure they're inclusionary of everyone, from just... But making sure we're on the same page, because it's, it's been convoluted since the beginning, so...
Yep. So I think we have to also emphasize diversity and equality, because that's what this whole discussion has been about. And I think, um, having this committee and having that person, that part-time person, to chair that committee to put everyone in, it's a good way to go. So I'm, I'm supporting that.
So are you, just to clarify, uh, is there, are you advocating that one of the community members that we would want to appoint would have a, uh, a background in equity and inclusion?
Oh, yeah, and, and I think there, there are people out there. Um, I've talked to a couple of people that have trained in that, so I think those folks, either we reach out to them or they reach out to us, like, maybe they've already reached out to you. Um, I think it has to be a person that wants to do this, you know? It shouldn't be just a job to get paid, I think it's something you have to really want to do.
Okay. What else, what else, what are we, what are we missing, what are we happening?
Good. Like I said, the meat and potatoes.
Like, how we, yeah, I mean, the hard part is how do we, how do we select these members and, and...
Well, I mean, we've, we kind of, we've broached that, I, I'm wondering what, what, what power these committees have? Like, what is their framework other than the members that sit on it, right? Like, what, uh, we have policies and procedures, here's the council. We have procedures in which people join the council, get elected to be on the council, get reappointed to be on the council, what, what have you. But, uh, we have policies and procedures like Robert's rules that help guide us in the framework, as well as the certain committees that have been, uh, longstanding and set up. Uh, you know, how you submit a PL as a council member, how you would make a discussion item, how the members of each committee get appointed, we have all that framework. We, we don't have that for these committees, so what is the framework in which the guides them? Obviously, Robert's rules of order gives them a rough outline, like, it frames in how the cloud is shaped, but what, what chaos can happen in that cloud, you know what I mean? Without any order amongst it, right?
Mm-hmm. Maybe that's something that the committee can offer, you know, not just the mission statement, but how they're structured, and what their goals are, and how they're going to communicate back to the council, or communicate back to the mayor. You know, until you put people together, and you don't, you can't just write down ten things, this is what you're going to do, I think they should have...
Sure, I feel like you're describing the, the CIA right now. The government created it for a purpose of doing one thing, and then it kind of created its own, like, oh, we just got to come up with our own rules on how we get to operate, and what we're, what we're going to do. No, we're going to change this law, because we said we can, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think you're in a different lane. Um, I think we, they know what the, the, the purpose of the committee is, and they can be a part of how it's structured and, and what their goals are. I think until you put a committee together, and with this particular committee, there's going to be that chairperson that we talked about last week, and, you know, people...
Which, which one are we talking about, I'm sorry?
We're talking about the diversity and, um, inclusion thing.
Yeah, really, inclusion, okay.
Um, I think until you get that person, and then told him the others, they're going to tell you, let's do this, and this is what our goal is. I just think that's part of it. Um, I've seen committees that, there's a structure, but we throw that out the window, and we get a new structure because that was outdated. So I just don't want to kind of pigeonhole this committee to where this is what you're going to do and nothing else.
Sure, so we could, you could establish the committee based on the simple fact that this committee is, like I said, the topic, which is to review city policies, rules, and legislation that would, uh, not be up to date, or would hinder inclusion, equity, or diversity. That, I mean, that, that right there could be your meat and potatoes, and we've already kind of roughly established who would sit on the committee.
You know, I, I also, you know, like, like Linda said, I mean, it's, when we form committees, I mean, even, we don't follow Robert's rules to the T here, right? I mean, um, we, we serve many different, uh, purposes, we have many different discussions, so I don't want to just say that's their only goal, is to draft, like, you know, propose legislation to us and say, you need to make these policy changes. They can be representatives, too, to bring to light greater problems within our community, right? I mean, it's, it can serve multifaceted, it's not mutually exclusive.
And I also don't think, um, that, that's a great point, and I, I also don't think that there'll be really any shortage of issues and topics for these committees to tackle. I mean, uh, we've received proposals and, and ideas, feedback, people that are here tonight, and even though they might not be on the committee, they still could be a contributing voice. And I think there's a lot of, like, things that we could, that this committee could attack immediately, and, and, you know, some of the things are maybe less realistic, some of the things are extremely doable. And, uh, I, I don't think we're, we would need to worry about action for the committee to, to go after them.
Sure.
So...
So how do we choose the chairperson? How do you guys...
So, did the, did the audit and compliance pick him as the chair, were you the chair?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, I think it does make sense to have, uh, a council member as, as the chair.
Yeah.
Um, just because then, well, on the audit and compliance, I served as really the, 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 uh...
Liaison.
Transmission, the liaison of what we would discuss and review and, and present it to you. So, um, I think that probably makes the most sense, is to have that liaison be one of the council members to bring that back to the larger council body, as, as we're the ones really that can pass the policy. Um, you know, but as, um, I want to say that it was made up of, and it can do any mix, or, uh, but I think we had three council members and then two, uh, accountants from, from the city, uh, Ron, Ron and Ernie Callenbeck, so, um, you know...
And it was, I mean, there wasn't a lot of, um, one thing that, that I'm, I'm just thinking about is, you know, in a typical voting committee body, you, you would want an, an odd number, right? So that there's always a, whatever, but, what, in those, I mean, I was not in that committee, right? You didn't necessarily take minutes and vote per se on things, right? There wasn't really, like, this need to all hands eye, nay, nay, you know what I mean? Like, do we need to even...
Work, work session, kind of...
It wasn't work, you know, we didn't have a quorum, right? So we didn't need to, we, we could meet at, you know, Tim Hortons to, to sit down and have discussions, it didn't have to... Um, Nick, do you have any, I mean, a committee doesn't have to be outnumbered, right? If, if it's a subcommittee?
No, it's gonna, is, is this a, a subcommittee of the council that you're talking about, or is it a special committee or an advisory committee? It's three different things to, to deal with.
It would be exactly like the audit department.
So an advisory?
So, that would not be a subcommittee of the council, because that would be made up of council.
Oh, okay.
So it would be an advisory, that you, you want, you did, and as, uh, there's a section, uh, two that were... So you would need to, uh, the council, by a resolution, needs to establish powers that you need in this committee, and they are quite subject here in the council.
Right, those are the meat and potatoes I was talking about, though, like, you don't want to just say that, so this council does, this committee doesn't have any power, or it does have power, well, what are the powers? You need to spell them out.
And I, but memory service, didn't Bill appoint it Ron and Ernie, right? Didn't he have a thing?
He also appointed the council members that sat on said committee.
Well, no, the council members are advisors, or, or the vice president?
Well, the, the council members are actually, uh, the advisory committees, because, because those council members that sat as a member.
Okay.
But they are all...
The real power of that committee, there wasn't any, is, is the five, is the advisor.
Right, and they're all, they were all appointed by Bill, like, Bill could have, you know, Bill...
Is that right, the mayor, uh, appointed all the positions?
Yeah, the mayor appointed all the positions.
I remember, didn't we have the, uh, finance chairman, which was one of the, and then two?
Well, you could, yeah, you could, I'm sure you could specify that in how it is, so Bill obviously only has one choice to appoint, but at the same time, like, next year, if John wasn't finance committee chair, then he wouldn't...
So we could, we could specify what council members are automatically on that?
Good, yes, or you establish, who's going to be on the committee by a resolution, as far as the positions, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're, you're pigeonholing Bill's selection base, essentially what you're doing.
Right.
Which can be a good thing or a bad thing, so...
Or the mayor.
Team member.
Not Bill.
Yeah, the mayor, the mayor is a whole, correct, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
Is there a limit on how many members are on an advisory committee?
No.
Is it thirteen thousand one hundred and fifty-eight people in the city? Sorry.
My, my only concern is, is that, I think for a committee, like, the audit and compliance, that, that I think five is pretty appropriate, right? But something like the equity and inclusion committee, I think, I don't want to have twenty-five people in them, but I think maybe more than five is good.
I agree, I think seven, seven to nine.
Yeah, but, but not double, it's either one.
No.
So, so is a minimum of seven, but not to exceed nine?
Because you still want to be able to, uh, especially the fact that you don't need to sit in a, in a, uh, a forum like this, you don't need to, you can, you can meet up at, as long as there's, what, less than four council members? You can meet at Tim, Tim Hortons, and...
Yeah.
And maybe if you have five, five, uh, members of the, the community on it, and only three show up, I mean, you can still get work accomplished.
How does, how does, uh, Nick, how does open meetings law apply to an advisory committee? As long as the, the council members are limited to, what is it, two, three?
I, I would, I would do a little bit of research on that, give you the exact answer, but my, my understanding would be that it's still subject to open meetings.
So, yeah, if you met at Tim Hortons, you would have to...
The council was establishing, the government was establishing, I mean, they're pretty open meetings law.
Would apply to...
There are some opinions that differ from that, so my advice would be that you follow the open meetings law.
Right, so, uh, like...
Take minutes and all that?
If, yeah, you should, you can take minutes.
But, uh, you know, my, my thought is, so if there's, if there's nine members of this committee, and, you know, three of them live in the same neighborhood, it would kind of apply the same way as a quorum with the council. If you have any more than, what is it, three members in the same area, it has to be an advertised area, so that, I mean, that also kind of allows diversity of the committee as well. Like, you can't grab all, you know, five community members that hang out at the same place every day, right? Like, they might be community members, they might have great opinions on it, but you, this way you kind of allow it to be different members of the community, because they would fall under that same guise of, uh, the open meetings law. Where we, we can't meet in groups of three or four, outside of these chambers, otherwise we have to advertise it.
So, uh, what if we did this, what if we had two aldermen, one of which is designated the, uh, the chair of the committee, right? And we'll figure out if that's, uh, a pass through to one of the, uh, standing committee chair, and so if it's the public safety chair, or if it's the strategic planning, or the council president, or whatever, right? And then one other alderman, like, at large, uh, four community members and a city employee.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great inclusion, um, to include a city employee.
I'm not saying it's the mayor or the chief of police, but a city employee can be somebody in the water department, somebody in the clerk's office, wherever.
I think that's a really, um, yeah, one or two employees, I think, would be, yeah, that's a great idea.
Okay. Okay, good start, anything, anyone else would like to add?
So, I mean, good start, it, it sounds like we've pretty much framed the, the, the inclusion committee. It didn't, I mean, we haven't really broached on the, the police in the same framework, but I think essentially, as long as you, we've got most of the... framework, but I think essentially as long as you, we've got most of the meat and potatoes, I mean, really, we just look for a resolution?
So, yeah, so the, the E and I committee would need a resolution to establish, right? So.
My experience, you can't make one on the floor.
Like, right now?
Yeah.
I'd rather.
Sure, you just refer, well, right, but you'd refer to the, you'd refer a PL to the, the city attorney for, for legal advice and potential resolution?
Let's just let Nick look at it, and if anything, we, you know, if we want to.
Can Nick look at it without sending it to him?
We do a special resolution or a special meeting, or we can just wait till next council.
Can I say one last thing on that, on that topic?
I don't think we need necessarily be done with that. I kind of want to just face on what police are going to take from that.
I guess it's, it's good that we actually have people in attendance tonight, because as I, as, well, Bill and I both found out when we were working on the Audit and Compliance Committee, maybe not as quite as exciting of a topic, we had a hard time finding community members willing to serve, right? It's, these are unpaid positions to shell up and, and try to make a difference in, in the city. So I guess as we now are essentially listing out, I don't know, I forget how many people for the residents, for the Police Reform Committee and for the, potentially the Diversity and Equity Committee, there's, you know, like, ten people from our community that we've listed. You've got to be willing to, to, you know, serve, right? So hopefully that interest, you know, sending letters of interest to, to Bill or the council president or whomever, you know, we get that passed through to the, the community.
So do we want to, like, consider an open, have people serve?
I don't want to throw Bill under the bus, but, I mean, I think we, we need to reach out to our community members and.
Under the bus, you don't.
Cause, cause he's the one that gets all the, the phone calls and the resumes, so, and he's, he's gotten some really interesting ones lately, so.
I think we're ready to start receiving, I think we're ready to start receiving people who are interested.
Okay.
All the wheels for Bill.
Other interests, the resume, or, you know, whatever else, whatever support and information is available.
So, so perhaps specifying what they would like to be of interest on, whether it's the Police Reform Committee or the Equity and Inclusion Committee, right?
Agreed.
Okay, great, so.
All you people here, step up to the plate.
So then the Police Review Committee, we, as far as I see from our discussions, I, I think there's two options we can consider. One, in terms of the structure, it would be the police union rep, the city council rep, the mayor, another alderman, and then three community members, with the city attorney as an advisor. I, I think the preferable way that we should consider going is a police union rep, the chief of police, a council representative, and then four community members with the, the mayor and the city attorney as the acting advisor role, as the, you know, they all sit at the table instead of, you know, in the back or in the audience. Any thoughts or comments on that?
You could, I guess my thought would be, I think, I, I think the mayor needs to sit at the table, but whether or not the mayor needs to have a voting authority, I mean, I think the position, if you want to call it, is it called ex officiado, somebody who doesn't vote? What is that? A position that's a committee member but does not vote?
Back to your Latin, Nick.
I, I, I think that's, you know.
A non-voting member.
A non-voting member, there you go. So, you know, for example, I want to say, like, on the tree board, like, the council president is automatically on the tree board but doesn't have voting power.
Right.
Okay, so.
Or the clean action committee, or, or would the Police Reform Committee be an advisory committee as well, or is, see, that's, that's part of the gray area, I believe, okay, so it would be set up and structured by resolution in the exact same manner, so it would be an alderman and a chair. And the mayor would have non-voting, right? He would be, he would be part of it, necessarily.
But he would also be appointing all the members.
Correct.
Right.
As long as we approach it as a team.
Yeah, definitely. And I, I think if we're gonna, I would want to go towards the side of more community participation than less. So I don't think we're going to make mistakes anyhow. We should have six people in the community at a time, we should have had more, like, not less.
So how, other than just word mouth, when it comes to this council, how would we, how would we broadcast this to the community, because, you know, we get a lot of different audiences? And would we allow people to be on both sides?
I think we should wait and see how, how the, the F will turn out, or we, you know, get tied down. But it's, it's all good, good to the rate. As far as getting the word out that that is, I mean, City of Owens Facebook page.
The mayor's Twitter account.
The mayor's Twitter account, yes, it's the.
My Twitter account's been locked.
And, I don't know, we could look at the, yeah, there you go, love it.
We got enough memes, uh, in our social.
Say memes?
Memes, yeah, that's what I was going to say. You got enough memes, Bill?
Memes, memes, or memes, we have enough memes to get the word out there and to start to take, I guess you'd say, interesting people, send them in their interest, and why do they usually be on it, but what group they may be representing, things like that.
Thanks, good job. We want to move on? Item three on our agenda is PL thirty-seven twenty by Alden Doherty, amend City of Owens code ordinances, section five point one, section four, to amend setback requirements for foul within this.
Thanks, Paul. So, thanks to my favorite newspaper, the requirements for publishing this law have been set back until the next council meeting for two weeks from now, but John Polly Castro from Flanagan Hill Farms is here to give us his, his intake and, or, you know, his, his speech on, you know, raising chickens, the, the health concerns and, or the, the lack thereof and, and things like that. So if, if, John, if, I don't know if you want to come to the podium, or, Paul, it's up to you, where's a good spot for him to speak to the council?
As you're, I'm, I'm, um, honestly, I don't care either way, but where you go, but I think that I've, I've raised about five thousand chickens this last five years. So, um, with myself an expert, I can kind of know what, what they do. I think there have been a lot of cities, a lot of much bigger cities that have reduced these space requirements, made it easier for residents to raise chickens, because outside of like gardening, it's probably the next best way for people to start developing their own sense of independence for food production and those sort of things. In the Owens farmers market, it's probably the top thing we get asked about next to gardening and raising vegetables is, hey, how do I raise chickens? What can I do? I know it seems silly, you know, like a lot of the big issues that we're dealing with today, but I think in, in, particularly as Tom DeLay in the last few months has, we doubt, which depends on just how many more people have purchased chickens, we, we deal with three different hatcheries, all of them have been sold out, even national hatchery. Our local tractor supply stores have been sold out. People like it or not are buying chickens, buying in your community here, they're raising in your community here. They're very hard to breed, for the most part, so people really aren't breeding them, so you don't have to see problems with you with cats and dogs, you know, you're saying, you're, you're chickens. You can easily outball roosters, most people do, which is the only way you're going to get baby chicks. And roosters have noisy ones, female chickens are not, there's a lot of different, one of them breeds, so it'll come a lot of different shapes, sizes, looks. People like that sort of thing. Most commercial chicken breeds that you buy, if you're looking for laying eggs, don't fly, so you're not going to have these, you know, flying around neighborhoods and things. They do jump up and roost on things, so that is a problem, neighbors that, they'll climb up the new roost on railing. But overall, we're not operating new ground, but I think this city has shown like tremendous forward thinking in a lot of these kinds of things. And right now, given the size of most of the lots that you look at in the city, it kind of shows, it's almost impossible for most people to raise chickens, given the setback where they don't need a lot of space, most people are not going to raise a lot, you're going to get an egg every other day out of a chicken. So six chicks typically have to buy, you know, families are going to get a dozen eggs every couple days, it's more than, you know, they're going to use. So it tends to naturally reduce the number of chickens that people have. They only lay for a couple of years before they tend to stop laying, you know, and they just either become passive, predators get a lot, you know, a lot of chickens disappear. So there are a lot of natural ways that, that there's kind of limits to how many people get. Yet one of the concerns is people are going to end up with, you know, hard to chickens, they're back there. It tends just not to happen. And again, that's, I don't want to go on and on about chickens, but I am happy to try answering any questions or, you know, specific concern or anything else.
Now, if you were living in the city of Owens, and as you just said, about six, would that be a good number to limit? That's one of my concerns with change and, or just adding to this law, is the number of chickens. Because you do have people that want to sell eggs, you know, make them for their family members, so six wouldn't supply that. So I guess my question is, how many do you see is acceptable if it's my next door neighbor?
Well, for this, and I say six, it is a good number, it's also the minimum amount typically that can be shipped. A lot of baby chicks, um, raw hatchery is given, you know, the need for heat and warmth. So if you, if you do buy one, and the US Postal Service is the only place that does ship live baby chicks, that's what all hatcheries use. So six tends to be most of the time people get. Like I said, predators can self-limit that. I don't think there's any problem limiting the number, um, three, four, five, six. I don't think most families would have a need more than six, because again, you do, speaking to the bad side, you do want to have one, because you live drawn, everything eats chicken, so it tastes like chicken. So, and I use the phrase a lot, is a chicken seat always, it just do. So, and so, you know, you let people get passionate about it, and I tell you, we have a ton of people around here that come and ask me all the time about how to raise them, what kinds, what we do. And so I, I, I'm just somebody that I think cultivating and gardening kind of allows, you know, leads to that. It's not going to be for people then, you know, general wanting to raise pigs or cows in their backyard. It doesn't tend to be that way. Chickens are just meat, because they're simple, it's a good way to get kids involved, and it produces food, and I just, you never really hear me say that's a bad thing for people to produce more than one food.
What is the predators that show up?
Well, you're going to have cats and dogs, big ones, they don't, you have owls, hawks, they're already in there, but you kind of have other things, raccoons and skunks, or big killers of chickens.
We have skunks and owls.
Yeah. And, and I, again, I don't know if you have foxes, things like that come through, but, you know, there are some more obscure ones, those that eat your big ones, it tends to, you know, on the plus side, the bird tends to just be gone, so you can, you know.
Thank you.
Got a quick question. So one of the concerns that, that crossed my mind and a couple of the other council members that I spoke with was just, again, being unfamiliar with this territory here, but disease, okay? So fear of, of, you know, chickens, are they carrying diseases? Is this a great idea to lessen the setbacks, therefore putting them closer to people's properties and, you know, thereby encouraging chicken ownership, I guess? Any concerns that you could share?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think overall, I'd say it's, it's not unlike raising any other animal. If you do it poorly, you have problems. And, and you do have oversight, you have people that monitor whether you're breeding cats in your bathtub, dogs in your basement, it happens, you know. Chickens certainly, yes, can be dirty. You leave them in one place and you have a ton of them, they're going to poop, they poop every day. But they're also, when the levels are going around your backyard, or you move your tent, great fertilizers of the garden, kitchen, kitchen, chickens are one of the best things, you know, in a kitchen yard. One of the best ways, they eat tons of bugs, they're actually, dung mud can actually keep a yard area free, just about as much dung mud as they go, and great fertilizers for gardens. But I'd say, yeah, it absolutely can be a problem, people use or misuse it, but I guess, I'd say that's true of just any animal, poorly done, it's a problem. So you're, you're right, you would have issues if people did not care.
Which to specify, John, our, our code currently sits at the, the, the food and where the animals sleep must be cleaned on a daily basis. So it wouldn't give our code enforcement anything not to go after in that. Also, for the limitation on the chickens, just want to let everybody know, I still have a, the, the gut of a, a, a college student, so I, I usually, my kids will have one or two eggs apiece and I, I will down like four to six, so just throwing that out there.
Any other questions on the, the chicken law?
So just for.
Oh, Dave and Steve, yes.
Yeah, just to, to help make the, I mean, pigeons should, if you come and you go very to rework, they say you're not skirt because of your lung problems you breathe in. So this is going to be along the same lines as the chicken. So if we get somebody that doesn't bake their chickens, I mean, we get a big windstorm and blowing that poop around their yards, because they're potentially causing the neighbors breathing in their poop dust, serious lung issues.
If you were talking about commercial chicken farms with tons and volume of chickens, you're talking about thousands and thousands. I mean, again, I've done about five thousand you must, I would do a hundred at a time in small movable tractors. Not, not, not a mission, mismanagement, of course, but it's also a moment to think that, you know, all chickens carry something else, you know, these things happen in commercial operations, not usually in backyard operations. You could crack open a raw egg, you probably, I'm not going to do this, you could crack open raw egg, chickens easily have a tick, likely never get sick from it, other than just don't have raw egg. They're not carrying yourself disease in and of itself, just like the bird flying off, is it in and of itself? Can it happen? Yes. Is it always the norm? No. Most wood degree of these things tends to happen from commercial operations, large mismanaged operations, not your backyard, um, chicken. Can be problems, yes, right, they're probably more likely to have an neighbor get mad because their cat killed my chicken than you are from disease flowing, you know, being blown, raised across, carrying illness of the chicken. That's, that's, you would need an awful lot over a very long time to get that.
And roosters, what kind of they start, I mean, I assume they break the pride?
That's also a little bit, they'll, they'll crow any time they're not, and no matter what. If you don't have a lot of roosters, you'll probably have chicken problems here, because they, they can be heard across all sectors. I, I don't know of a city that doesn't typically flash that, but very few will allow roosters, and because they can be very aggressive, they can be, they can attack, just because they're practical, so. Roosters can be, don't bring, you don't want a lot of roosters.
I also tend to, I see your point, John, at the same time, I also tend to not like segregate one class of, group of gender out of our community either, so.
So any other questions that are, well, related to?
Just a comment.
Oh, yes, let's keep this going.
Yeah, just, have you, one day, I believe with one day, a couple of news, there was an article on January seven issues over chickens too, so you might want to read that article.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, Alden Doherty, would you like to sponsor?
Uh, yes, I'd like to sponsor, but first, before I can sponsor, I'd like to thank John Polly Castro for giving us his.
Thank you very much, yes, sir.
His expertise today. Thanks. And with that, I will sponsor this resolution.
Someone like second, second by Alden Doherty, all in favor?
I.
Any votes? Okay, so thirty-seven twenty is approved and will be referred to the regular meeting on? Would that be the eleventh, did I?
Yes.
On August eleventh.
Can I, can I ask a quick question on that?
Please.
Would we be required to put in a secondary PL, or could we amend that one on the spot to say excluding roosters? How would that work?
It'd have to be republished.
It'd have to be republished?
Yes.
Okay, just something in case we wanted to talk about, in case we wanted to.
Make the roosters go back?
Yeah. I don't know.
Okay.
We can talk about that. Thanks.
Okay, so item four on our agenda is PL forty-two twenty by Mayor Haley, to reward the contract for cleanup week, refuse services to be deep-nerved. refuse services to be deep-nerved, uh, waste for an amount of two hundred and ten dollars per ton with one pound.
Yes, uh, we did the bidding process, and this was the, uh, we got two bids, and B here was the, uh, was the one that had the lowest bid, uh, with electronics, so I'm asking that you approve their bid, and we can continue on, have our, we're slated to have, uh, pickup week to start August, Monday, August tenth. So we will continue forward. Uh, actually, uh, because everybody was in agreement, it's already gone, uh, the newspaper ad has already gone out, and people to attend to, uh, PDW, and, uh, if anyone, if anyone participates, so.
What is the, what is the price per homeowner?
Forty dollars, uh, with no land products and fifty dollars with land products.
I think that's great.
Yeah. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, someone like sponsor, Alderman Witt, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman, uh, Doherty, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, take forty two twenty's approved, and we refer to the regular meeting on. Tonight, oh, tonight. Oh, there it is, I'm sorry, it's the line area, okay, yep, I bet. Okay, uh, okay, not on your agenda tonight is a discussion, um, regarding supplemental agreement, walk will only in phase two, uh, be led by Director Green.
Yeah, thanks, uh, walk will in is partially funded state projects, and the way that the state project run, um, taken as a basis, so as you know, we'll begin construction. Um, so in order for this project to be reimbursable within construction, we have to close out the design phase. Um, so we've exhausted all of the design phase money, but, um, we actually gave in twelve thousand dollars on other projects. So, um, the gist of the, the resolution that you have in front of you is to modify the existing agreement, uh, because you've already passed the resolution, uh, make the design phase funding available. Uh, so what we're gonna do is transfer twelve thousand into the construction phase, and make all that construction funding, um, eligible for reimbursement.
So basically, we're gonna take it, we're gonna get twelve thousand more bucks, we're going, so.
Sure, yeah, we, we draft this through our processes, so we know when there's money we have for construction before we go to bid, this project's been awarded, and the notice of receipt is, is all of it completed. Uh, so this is essentially a formality in, in, in the funding sense, so we can get our money back from the state.
So is this kind of a use it or lose it? So we're not spending it in the design phase, and if we don't spend it in the design phase, we won't get reimbursed for it, so we've gotta spend it in the construction phase?
In a way, this is an accountability measure, because the, the funding is actually foundational funding, so, um, the state has to go through a proper process to get funding allocated to them. Um, so what we did way back was allocate the design funding, now they're allocating the construction funding. And between those times, we have to meet certain benchmarks, or else they can pull our funding, or at least they prep to pull our funding, over a period of time, maybe stay on schedule and so on and so forth.
Okay.
So if I remember right, we, we like to put some more money into the contingency we decided to go with, right? So we'll just reduce that amount that we're pulling out of a fund.
That was already considered, because I'd already spoken to a consultant before approaching you all. I knew that.
Okay.
A couple months ago. Yeah, so then you can tell the project cost, and it's in the resolution, it's one point six seven million. Well, the state is contributing five hundred and forty thousand, both of those amounts are in this resolution. Um, again, it's kind of a formality, because the city, we've spoken about, but the city matches, which is somewhere in the three hundred and fifty thousand range.
Uh, so if I may, any questions or comments? All right, thanks. Oh, uh, Bob, can you kind of give me a brief update on the trailhead market, maybe as we talked about, um, um, Constitution, or not Constitution, on the, on the year.
I'm sure, um, yeah, the mayor and I were together, um, the location, the idea that Paul had brought up, and, uh, we kind of settled, and we got a call in the loop on, uh, West State Twentieth Street. So, um, we took it upon ourselves to order a water fountain for that area. Um, the mayor had an idea of having a patch there, and then where to be supposed to upcycle bicycles here in Olean. And they were willing to donate a bike stable, um, it's meant for outdoors and for municipal, it has pools on it, um, you can pop a bike up and have, um, air through it and things like that. So we'll have a little concrete path, um, near, um, that rental area, across where you can see, um, in the south side of the street, you'll have, you know, a water fountain, like, or a, a bottle building station, um, and, and a bike stable right next to it.
And it's got the dog thing here, and the dog can, sure, it comes with a pretty high advantage.
Yeah, physically, like, the dog's history.
Cool.
So that's the words, so later, next few weeks, we'll have that later.
Very good, thank you very much for that, and, uh, obviously, it's awesome that our club cycle will donate.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say that too, there, there, those guys are over there, awesome people, and it's nice to see that, like, even just a small local business giving back to the community as much as they do, so. I'm sure that thing costs a pretty penny, so.
Yeah.
The only thing I'd like to throw in is just to make sure we have somebody who take, you know, closely takes care of what the facility have. Um, I have seen those in bigger cities, and they tend to get worn out and broken, and they'll sit there.
The bike pump thing?
Yeah, the, the tools will get beat up, destroyed, just, just a thought, but it needs to be thought about.
Good point.
I think the, um, dog, the ditch for the water, that needs to be cleaned once in a while, too. I've had a couple of people mention that.
Yeah.
They'll just keep that.
That's an excellent point. Okay. Uh, anything else for, uh, creating a hold? Okay, uh, I will make motion to adjourn, but second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Witt, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Yeah, I'll call for the regular meeting of the council, approved in July twenty eighth, will a clerk please call? Alderman Witt?
Here.
Alderman Tannis?
Here.
Alderman Doherty?
Here.
Alderman Quacker?
Here.
Alderman Estera?
Here.
Here, please rise to the occasion.
Dear Lord, we are meeting tonight to conduct matter of business. Guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of purpose, right word and speech, and bow your supreme wisdom upon our activities, so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance tonight, in your name we pray.
But we. To the Republic of which it stands.
Uh, reading, correcting, and approval of the minutes of the previous regular meeting.
The regular meeting of the Olean County Council was held in two thousand and July fourteen of twenty twenty at six thirty five P M. Present, Alderman Gonzalez, Alderman Witt, Alderman Tannis, Alderman Doherty, Alderman Quacker, Alderman DiBaldito, and Alderman Estera.
Okay, I will make motion to approve the minutes from the previous, uh, regular meeting, do I have a second?
Sorry.
Second by Alderman Estera, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, we take minutes are approved, uh, committee reports and unfinished council business. Is that none? Communications for the mayor.
Thank you, Paul, I have two. I received information, uh, that, uh, obviously, James Marsallen will be retired from the Olean Police Department as of August twenty eighth, twenty twenty. First one. And I give the great pleasure to nominate for the position of Alderman in the sixth floor, Vernon Robinson Jr., of nine ten Washington Street. Uh, I believe I might have just, was that dress correct?
Nine King Ten.
Nine King Ten, thank you. Nineteen ten Washington Street, Olean. Currently in the Olean, storekeeper of warehouse operations for National Grid, covering Olean, Franklinville, and Wellsville, early summer. She has been in Olean community for almost twenty seven years, where he raised his family, served in the United States Marine Corps, Honorable Discarder, and Deserving veteran. Thirty plus years of management, uh, thirty plus years of supervisory experience, I'm sorry. Uh, graduated with honors from Jameson Community College, with an AAS Business Administration. Graduated from Franklin University with a BA in applied management, summa cum laude. So give me great pleasure to, uh, recommend to you the appointment as the owner for, uh, four and six, Vernon Robinson Jr. Vernon? So, there'll be a resolution, uh, later on in the meeting here, about two minutes, so, so, thank you.
Anything else, Paul? Anything, okay, this is ladies, communicate.
We have none.
City official reports?
None. Proposed legislation, then a report. PL forty one dash twenty by Alderman Quacker, referred to regular meeting two thousand and July twenty eighth, twenty twenty, forward motion by Council President. PL forty four dash twenty by Mayor Elliott, referred to coming on to go, two thousand and July twenty eighth, twenty twenty by Council President.
Okay, uh, before we go into the public comment section of the meeting, I'd like to first offer an opportunity, anyone from the council would like to make a comment, please, we will decide. Okay, seeing, seeing none, uh, will a clerk, uh, remind you how to do that?
The public comment portion of the common council regular meeting is established to provide members of the community with the opportunity to publicly visit their roots, further concerned, or to provide input personally to any issue or defecting area. Additionally, the mayor, the common council members, and city department heads, encourage any personal questions, contact them and their offices.
Uh, okay, that being said, I'm open to public comment section of the meeting. Uh, if you'd like to make a comment, please approach the podium, state your name and address, you have one five minutes.
Um, Daniel Lee, Olean resident. Uh, first, I wanna say, Commander Gotti's pushing the, um, committees forward, and in previous, um, committees you guys had, or you guys called, or you maybe had, but, I wanna push that forward and ask you for some structure to that. It's been about a month, and you know who we are, the, for our J C perspective, we've been pushing that a little bit. Um, so I'd like to see you guys actually impose a structure to that, and actually move that and not roll over with, with supposedly. We agreed from a committee's perspective, our, our council's perspective, that we need to be two separate committees, the diversity committee, the police reform committee, police reform committee, turns into the community review board type of committee. So we're glad to see that it's in the direction that you guys have had. But most importantly, I'm actually happy to see that Vernon Robinson is not made for Councilman Award six. I don't know if you guys understand what's gonna happen, everything, when you guys try to vote him in. I have all councils, you guys pull up so I can talk about that. Um, I've reached out to everybody, I could possibly reach out to Olean, and there's never been a man in America who's said, I'm the only in state council, that anybody can ever imagine. So from an ORJ C perspective, so with equal rights, this is history. You guys are gonna be history, you guys are gonna elect the first African American man to sit on the council. It took us longer than electing president of the United States, that's okay, we're here, right? We're here, so, but, you know, and Vernon's a good man. Vernon, Vernon's been in this community, Vernon's a good man, Vernon's done good work in this community. You know, from, from a council perspective, we look back, we look back a hundred percent, including from a personal man and family perspective, I back Vernon a hundred percent. That's probably going on for Vernon and, and, and ORJ C council. I want you guys to realize that, now, as we go through this process of making Olean more of a diverse community, this is what it's about, it's about making history, it's about changing things, it's about changing the way we look, changing the way we feel, and you guys are a part of that, and you guys should feel good about it. You should go home tonight, feel good, that you made history, you made change in the city. You know, chicken poos, I don't really have a lot of comments about that, I love roosters, I don't know what to tell you. But this is history, this is bigger chickens, so, you know, I, I, I appreciate that, and, and I'm honored to be here, and I just watch, actually, as a city owner resident. So I can't imagine that they go against Vernon, um, I can't imagine why. I mean, obviously, somebody does that, we'll, we'll have you explain that later. But, you know, I, I just can't see why, but it couldn't happen to a better guy, Vernon, congratulations, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hayden, anything else? Anyone else?
Time low, uh, eleven street, Olean, New York. Just wanna say thank you guys, uh, for taking the first step, like Daniel said, you know, you guys are great history today, and, uh, you know, it's our job to hold your feet to the light, it's our job to gradually do something right, and, uh, thank you from the bottom of my heart, as a, as a, as a black man in Olean's community, to see this happen, like, I'm sure, like, you guys understand what that is, but I don't know if you can really, really feel what it is, so, like, I'm just gonna tell you, like, congratulations to all you guys. Like you said, go on, thank yourself, go get married, so you know I did the right thing. More, if you did the right thing, this is the first step. I would also like to make the suggestion, uh, about the community review. I would, I would think, like, about ethics, you know, like, confidence and interest and stuff. When you're putting on the, you know, I can understand mayors that, uh, without power alone, but when you have the chief of police on there, just a lot of times you're literally going against that, and the blue wall of silence could come into play with that. So I would just think of, like, confidence and interest and stuff like that when you're doing that. I also think the idea that, like you said, get the community, the, that committee together, and then maybe form what powers and stuff that they can have, um, and such, guys that, you know, anybody for a community up here, um, I could, and board that you'd like to be on. Um, I work, I work with you guys to take Olean into the future, and to make it a better, diverse place, so that people can come. My daughter's graduating, and you need the next year for the fasteners and chemical, and, I'm sorry, biotech. And I would like her to come back here, but do I think she will? That depends on when you do it, and I just hope that we can work together in the future to keep things going right, thank you.
Thank you very much, anyone else?
Thank you, George, quarter three. Uh, Jackson Nelson, I was listening to you all tonight, thank you very much for everything you guys, a lot of hard work, a lot of hard work, huh? Think about the committees. It could very well be a subcommittee of public safety. As I mentioned before, you would, uh, need subpoena power, and you could use that subpoena power to ensure the involvement of police, union officials, lawyers, school officials, even data, as needed. Uh, I would argue that active police might be preferred for consultation over, over higher level, because of a lot of ongoing changes in legislation, as well as how it's viewed. The language of the order, executive order two of this, and in speeches made by the governor, hints at the level of funding, making sure that it's intended on the effort placed into the reform. Things get, things get difficult for the city as a whole, not just for police, if we get this wrong. Money is uncertain in the foreseeable future, COVID, the economy, everything's really hanging on the balance right now. Uh, but the police funding is going down statewide, and police can expect more challenges in the near future. Olean already has had issues securing funding in the past, more than once. So we shouldn't give the state yet another reason why we don't have to be doing it. But showing how we do have it, as important, people are watching and waiting to glorify those who get it.
Uh, thank you very much. Anyone else?
I guess going ahead, if you're on a different page, um, I just kinda wanna come up, say this thing, and then get a title mentioned, say something, and then you mentioned, um, appreciate you guys actually taking this up and moving forward. Um, and as you had mentioned sort of earlier, we don't wanna get into the business of just, you know, literature, who's, who's gonna actually put some.
put some locks in place, and take some physical action forward, and that's what I'm about, um, that actually improves your board, and also improves your board, I would, I just want to say that I would assume that even through the mayor, my, my other intent to be improving on both those boards, um, because I have full experience in both of those areas, so, right, this is the first time that I've attended, kind of sat back and watched, but I'm glad that I attended now tonight, um, I definitely appreciate that you guys are taking the time, putting my foot in everything for moving this all forward, we've done great, um, I get the comment, hopefully that goes through, um, I, I feel very, very good as well, so, I don't want to take a lot of your time, but, so, come on, introduce myself, I'll be around a lot, right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I will call the public comment section, all will be involved in the panel.
By Alderman Crawford, seconded by Alderman Doughty, the auditor has processed bills and claims against the city of Ole Miss, as per list submitted to each Alderman, and recommends payment thereof, whereas, the auditor has presented to the common council bills and claims against the city of Ole Miss, so the legal requirement is being doubt for a budget for the government thereof, now therefore be resolved, that the same being occupied by the auditor and allowed, and the auditor is hereby authorized and directed to prove warrants for the payments thereof, at the amount set opposite it was expected to claim.
Okay, any comments, questions on the panel? Seeing none, will a clerk please call?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Tannis?
Yes.
Alderman Doughty?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And Alderman Wudal?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Okay, before we go into resolutions, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules, can I have a second?
Sir.
Second by Alderman Anastasia, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, rules are suspended, I will make a motion to amend the agenda to include resolutions fifty-six twenty and fifty-seven twenty, uh, can I have a second for that?
Sir.
Second by Alderman Crawford, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so, resolutions are added, and we can go on to resolution fifty-four point?
Resolution fifty-four twenty, PL forty-one dash twenty, resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from general contingency fund, um, to live radio one-six-eight-zero-point-two-zero-zero for cost associated, associated with the live spinning of having conferences. Very much done, it's possible.
Okay, so, we did discuss this in committee last week, any comments, questions, or concerns? I'd like to say, I think this is great, and absolutely, and I thank you, Alderman Crawford, for running us around.
Um, just, I, I don't think we could, I mean, we've got yet another person here, right, live streaming it, so this is, um, this is due.
Yep. Would you like to sponsor?
Please.
I have a second. Will a clerk please call?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Tannis?
Yes.
Alderman Doughty?
Certainly.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And Alderman Wudal?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Resolution fifty-five dash twenty, PL forty-two dash twenty, by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Doughty, to award contract for cleanup week, first two, services for Beepner, waste for an amount of two hundred and ten dollars per ton, two, five, traps.
Okay, discussing committee the whole, any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, will a clerk please call?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Tannis?
Yes.
Alderman Doughty?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And Alderman Wudal?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. PL fifty-six dash twenty, PL, non, authorizing the implementation and funding in the first instance, of one hundred percent of the federal aid and state multi-study program aid eligible cost, of the transfer, of the transportation federal aid project and appropriate fund therefor.
Uh, mayor, do you want to speak to this all, or do you want to have anybody?
No, the, 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 the,